Some council members want to lay out their amendments on item 59, but Councilmember Casar, do you want to lay out your item?
I'll move the item. The version that was latest on the message board.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Moved by Councilmember Casar, seconded by myself. And Councilmember Poole, did you want to lay out your amendments?
I think Councilmember Alter wanted to go first, or I suggested that she go first.
Happy to go first, and hopefully these will be friendly amendments. My first amendment adds to the section about the report back for May 1st. So it adds a clause at the end, so it would now read, "The City Council directs the city manager to provide a report back to council on the implementation of this resolution, including changes to policies and procedures by May 1st, 2020." My amendment adds the following language, "and to provide a written report to council on the implementation of this resolution by January 31st, 2021." My second amendment adds the following after page 7, line 128. "The city manager is directed to inform city council should available testing at state or private labs inhibit the ability to prosecute high priority felony level cannabis-related trafficking offenses or a violent felony charge, not a cannabis-related charge, in a timely manner." Both of these amendments are intended to make sure that we have appropriate information moving on to see how this resolution and these changes to policy are working in practice and make sure that we have the information we need to reevaluate down the line, should that be necessary.
And just real quick, I didn't want to start having the discussion before the speakers, just laying them out.
No, Mayor Protam, I think that the amendments, as I've seen posted, are so close to being exactly friendly that if there's just some sense that they get that it all works out, then I hope that that informs the speakers generally of where this is headed, and that might change the way the testimony goes and even shortens it.
Okay.
So if y'all will entertain this quickly, I'm fine with Councilmember Alter's second report back date, and I just wanted to make a small change to it, and if she finds it friendly, I think that this could be incorporated in, which is just, there is a very small number of these felony cannabis-related trafficking cases at any given point. I believe that the city manager should be able to get this done, and for this to not interfere with those cases, that's my understanding throughout this. And so the small edits here are just to say, we want the city manager to ensure that this works and to report back to us on progress. So of course, if something isn't going well, of course, we would anticipate hearing that back.
So let me just ask the city manager. Part of what I'm trying to avoid is a situation that we've been experiencing with our DNA kits, where we don't have capacity to process testing at the state level because we have no lab at the city level. And obviously, this is a much smaller number of cases, and I'm totally comfortable with the limits that we're placing. I just want to make sure that we're not going to get in a situation where council's not going to know that there's a problem with the testing, and no one's going to come to us and say, "We have a problem, and we need to fix it," within a timely manner. So I don't really care which of the languages we use. I just want to be very clear that should we get into a situation where that testing has some kind of blockage at the state level, for the cases we've decided are appropriate to seek that, that we're going to take actions to address that quickly and in a timely manner. Is that understood?
Yeah, Councilmember, that would be my understanding, and it sounds like there's a lot of similarity in the direction. So I think the language as amended by Councilmember Casar would be fine.
That's fine, I'm fine then with that. Do you?
Thanks, Mayor Protam. So first off, I just wanted to reiterate my wholehearted support for the resolution that Councilmember Casar is bringing, in particular, the revised version of it and the purpose of it, which is to make sure we're not focusing our resources on low priority marijuana cases, especially in light of House Bill 1325. The additional updates that have ensued since we started posting on the message board have really helped get the clarity to the issues on felony prosecutions that I was interested in. I brought my earlier amendments to make sure that we were clear about the changes we were making and also to express my desire not to jeopardize those prosecutions, those are the high priority cases. I think that the clarity has been achieved, and so with the revised amendment that Councilmember, resolution, the revisions that Councilmember Casar has brought and the additions from Councilmember Alter, I don't feel the need to offer any additional amendments, so I'm good to go.
I really appreciate everybody working together on this and appreciate the public coming out. Please do testify about why you think this is important, but I assume y'all want to see us vote on this, and we take a 5:30 break, so I'll urge everybody to talk about why this is really important. I think it's really important, and if we get this public hearing done quickly enough, we can hopefully get it done before dinner.
Yeah, so I thought there was going to be more discussion in amendments. Are there any other amendments that were? Councilmember Otomo?
No, I don't have an amendment. I just have a question. Councilmember Casar, have you passed out your revised resolution on the dice?
I'll get that printed. We were having printer challenges, but we'll go get that printed right now.
And so just to be clear, you are accepting Councilmember Alter's, both of her amendments. The first one, you've revised with the amendment that you distributed. Councilmember Alter, you're comfortable with those edits?
It was the second one that was amended, not the first one.
Okay, but basically, both of those, you're comfortable with Councilmember Casar with the amendments that you've made to Councilmember Alter's amendments? And then Councilmember Poole, you distributed an amendment sheet, but you're not intending to move those because they've already been incorporated into Councilmember Casar's revised resolution?
That's correct. I had distributed that looking for some additional clarity, and I think that's been achieved. So I'm good to go.
Okay, thanks so much.
So with that, just to make those folks in the chamber clear, it looks like there's agreement, there won't be significant discussion, and this will likely pass. But we, of course, want to hear from you, so I'm going to start calling the speakers. Noel Davis, and I'm going to call a couple of people so you can get on deck. Noel Davis, Emily Garrick, is Andrew Epstein here? Andrew Epstein, okay. Warren Berkeley? Okay, so is Noel Davis here? No? Okay, so then it's Emily Garrick, you have seven minutes. And after Emily is Anna DeFradis? Did I get it right that time? Bradley Hargus and Jennifer Humphrey. You have seven minutes, Ms. Garrick.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protam Garza and councilmembers. My name is Emily Garrick. I'm a managing attorney at the Texas Fair Defense Project. I am not going to speak for seven minutes because I am just so excited that this resolution is being presented today. I'm so thankful to the sponsors for bringing it and hopefully to the rest of the council for voting on it. This is just such an important issue for all of Austin. At the Texas Fair Defense Project, many of the people that we help and who we work with, many of whom are single mothers, have had to suffer from the consequences of our possession of marijuana laws. They have lost their ability to drive, they have been put in jail, they have had warrants that they have had to live with for years, they've lost their housing, they've been kicked off of public benefits, all because of possession of marijuana laws. But after this last legislative session, one of those laws changed, and as a result, prosecutors across Texas, including here in Travis County, have decided that they will be rejecting cases for marijuana offenses unless they come with costly testing, which is just not the best use of our resources. And as a result of that, law enforcement departments in Round Rock, the Round Rock Police Department and the Travis County Sheriff's Office have said they will also no longer be enforcing these cases. And here in Austin, people are still being cited and sometimes even arrested for cases, even though those cases are automatically being rejected by the prosecutors. And so I'm really excited for Austin to join the other departments in not pointlessly citing or arresting people for cases that we know will be rejected. And I'm really excited for this resolution, which will just commit to not wasting our city resources just so we can start spending money on testing and prosecuting these really low-level cases again. I also just want to clarify something that has come up leading up to this resolution about felony versus misdemeanor. So under Texas law, any amount of a edible or brownie or oil that has THC in it, besides the plant substance, is a felony. So that means that this gummy right here, if it were, if it was a marijuana gummy, would be a felony under state law. So I'm so glad that you decided to clarify in this resolution that we are talking, when we have an exception for testing, we are going to have that be felony-level trafficking. We'll still be able to be enforced, we'll still have testing. This resolution won't interfere with that. But we want to make sure that people who have really small amounts of personal use marijuana and marijuana products are not going to be, we're not going to be wasting our resources prosecuting them. So thank you again to the sponsors for bringing this resolution. I am so happy to be here. I think this is going to be a really momentous day for Austin and a really great step forward for equity and racial justice in Austin. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anna DeFradis, and Bradley Hargus, and Jennifer Humphrey. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name's Anna DeFradis. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify on this. I'm here in my capacity as a co-founder of Survivor Justice Project in support of this work. I think I'll go ahead and read the comments I had prepared and offer them with the recognition that this isn't actually a contentious thing, but I would like the opportunity to put some things on public record, if y'all will indulge me. So I want to be clear, we're a group that works to transform sexual violence in the community and in systems. And the reason we're here before you today is primarily because Survivor Justice Project sees this as a racial justice issue, first and foremost. And I know that many of you do too. And that is not separate and apart from our concern that we have with sexual assault in our community. We learned through the leadership of the folks spearheading this effort that possession of marijuana was the third most common booking in Travis County Jail in 2018. We also learned that black people are six and a half times as likely to be jailed for possession of marijuana in Travis County as their non-Hispanic white counterparts, despite the fact that usage is the same. And so for us, this is unacceptable. So we know also that poverty and the lack of employment opportunities and the lack of institutional support from police and judicial systems are all considered risk factors for sexual assault. And you'll recall that we came before this body in support of decriminalizing homelessness to clarify that people who are homeless are at far greater risk of experiencing sexual assault than of committing it. So for us, it was real obvious. When we know that experiencing poverty increases the risk of being a victim of sexual assault, and we know that people of color in our community, and black folks in particular, are being jailed at over six times the rate of white folks, I just want to put out there, why are we collectively scratching our heads when we talk about the fact that only 9% of folks choose to report their sexual assault to law enforcement? For us, it's all connected. So yes, this is absolutely about better dedication of resources. Yes, this is about the inefficiencies and unenforceability associated with testing THC. And this is absolutely the result of the legislature's not taking action. We hope they'll clarify this next session. Yes, this is a waste of law enforcement time pursuing misdemeanor offenses that we know our local prosecutors won't take up. But I just, each and every one of those reasons alone is enough to pass the resolution. But I hope that we can be honest about the fact that this is, first and foremost, an opportunity to stop a racist practice of enforcing low-level marijuana possession in the name of public safety. So thanks for the opportunity to put that in the record.
Thank you. Bradley Hargus, Jennifer Humphrey, Paul Quincy. And then next is Chaz Moore. Is Cristian Caballero here? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, councilmembers. I'd just like to note for the record that it is 4:20 in the afternoon. My name's Paul Quincy. I'm an attorney here in town. I've been practicing criminal law in Austin for about 20 years now. I started off as a prosecutor with the county attorney's office. And during my time in practicing criminal law, I've seen a lot of changes in Austin, but one thing remains the same, cannabis is very popular. And I very much appreciate that you have taken up this issue and that it looks like you're going to pass this resolution. Part of my job is to help people seal and expunge their criminal records. And when we're talking about criminal records, a lot of people assume that because this is Austin, that a pot bust is no big deal because the cases are going to be dismissed. But a criminal record includes the records of the arrest, not just prosecution or conviction. And when somebody has an arrest record, it can prevent them from getting housing, a job, or even the opportunity to volunteer at their kid's school. So by cutting down on these arrests for these low-level and personal use marijuana offenses, I believe that you're doing a great thing for the people of Austin and living up to the values that our community espouses. So I'm so glad that you're looking forward to passing this thing, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, you have five minutes. After you is Jack Sfinkel, and then Julie Stone.
All right, yeah, I won't be too long either. Yeah. Well, actually, I'll just show some of them. We had a post-making party for this tonight, and I think it'd be a crime not to show these. So I'm just gonna, where's the camera? Can I get a camera right here to show some of these? It looks like Greg Casar gets a like for this resolution. There we go. Councilwoman Harper-Madison, you get a like. Fight crime, not plants, that's a good one. Thank you, Greg. The average A's for the people that made these were 30. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Natasha, again. Thank you, Flanagan, again. Hope you get well. Hope you don't have the flu, get us sick. Thank you, Casar, again. Thank you, many thanks, Greg, Jimmy, Natasha Delia. And thank you, Councilwoman Delia. As you can see, I believe everybody that signed up so far to speak is in favor of this, except my one good friend over at the Austin Police Association. But we're working on that. We're working on slowly getting them over to the good side. Because we just think at AJC, again, like I've been saying, you all's job is to, as much as you can in your jurisdiction as councilmembers in the city, to undo the legacy of white supremacy, to undo the legacy of Jim Crow, to undo the legacy of discrimination and all the things that have made not only this city, not only the state, but this country, what it has been. So I commend you all for taking yet another step in the right direction, yet another step as we try to get towards equitable, you know, just a future for all. And this is just a small step. So yeah, let's get you all home to your families, get out of here. I'm looking forward to this passing, and me and Ken Casser are going to eat a brownie after this. That's what he told me. I don't know what kind of brownie, but we'll figure it out.
Is Jack Sfinkel?
Hello, my name is Jack Sfinkel. I'm a Tex-
Hang on one second, because some people donated time. Did you need more than three minutes?
You know what? I'm going to just try to go through it really quickly. Hopefully, I can do it in three minutes. I even printed out extras with a resourced speech for you guys. It sounds like it's going to pass. We don't really need to do that, but I do want to get some on the record.
Just in case you go over three, let me just see if these, is Crystal Erickson-Collins here? Okay, is Sarah Nugent here? Okay, you have up to seven, but feel free to-
I will try to be brief. Thank you so much. So my name is Jack Sfinkel. I'm a Texas native, and I live in District 6. I'm here in my capacity as executive director for Texas Normal. We're the Austin chapter of the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. We actively engage up at the Capitol during session and here locally, and we focus on changing damaging policies that surround the prohibition of marijuana, scientific name cannabis sativa L. The cannabis plant, as surprise, is made up of many different cannabinoids, including tetrahydrocannabinol, THC, and cannabidiol, CBD, the most popularly known cannabinoids. Hemp is statutorily defined as cannabis with only trace amounts of THC being 0.3% or less. To give some context to why what you are doing is so important at the state and federal level, at the federal level hemp was removed from the Controlled Substance Act, the CSA, in December of 2018. Texas was then bound to amend our schedule of controlled substances to remove hemp from the list. This created pressure for the Texas Legislature to create a hemp program and statutes surrounding it. The bill passed unanimously out of both chambers and was signed by the governor on June 10th of 2019. Since THC is not responsible for the smell of marijuana, there is no way to tell by sight or smell if a product is legal cannabis hemp or illegal cannabis marijuana. The Texas District Attorneys and City, or I'm sorry, County Attorneys Association has given instructions clarifying that the burden of proof is on the prosecution and testing is required for any convictions. At the local level, many jurisdictions are doing the most they can within the discretion that they have. In Houston, we see that DA Og has initiated diversion programs and first chance programs that have saved their city over $27 million in the first year. The DFW area has dropped hundreds of cases, and further prosecution is not being pursued. We see many urban areas moving to this type of policy since DAs are not going forward with prosecution. Agencies like the Travis County Sheriffs, Round Rock Police Departments, they've all stopped low-level marijuana enforcement. District Attorney Moore and County Attorney Eskamia are not prosecuting possession of marijuana cases without THC testing results. These are very expensive tests. Only a limited number of crime labs have access and are accredited to test to the 10th of a percent. Despite this, our understanding is that APD is continuing to cite and in some case arrest people for possession, even though they know that these cases will be automatically rejected. When I was here before you in September, I noted that 86% of Texans want to change marijuana law from the status quo. 63 bills were authored in the last legislative session. One of the bills from a former prosecutor would change an ounce or less of possession of marijuana to a simple fine, which is also supported by the Texas GOP's platform. This bill had enormous support, passed out of the House of Representatives with a bipartisan supermajority, but the lieutenant governor decided to single-handedly prevent the bill from advancing by not holding a hearing. If the lieutenant governor had done the right thing, our state would no longer be subject to a patchwork of policies. The laws, regulations, and opinions surrounding the plant are changing. At the federal level, the Moore Act, which would remove cannabis from the CSA and also incentivize expunging old records, as well as the Safe Banking Act, which would allow licensed state marijuana-related businesses to engage in relationships with banks, have both been making their way through the legislature. Here in Texas, the Texas Department of Banking, TDB, has given instructions to financial institutions regarding hemp businesses. The Texas Department of Agriculture and the Texas Department of State Health Services are working quickly to move through regulations on both the hemp program and the human consumable hemp products program. TDA is going, has their plan currently under review with the USDA, and once this is approved, licensing for farmers, manufacturers, and retailers will begin. These programs are extremely important to Texas businesses. The landscape is changing quickly across Texas and the nation, and this is why it's so important that the city of Austin bring further clarity for our citizens. And it is of note, I'll close on this, that hemp is legal in all 50 states. 33 states have access to safe and legal cannabis for the medical conditions. Over two dozen states have decriminalized the possession of the plant, and 11 states have legal access to adult-use markets. Austin is a hub of events, festivals, conferences, and so much more. Many of the visitors to our state have no idea how harsh the criminal consequences are for possession. In fact, many of our own citizens do not even understand how hard they can be impacted by this. I appreciate that you are doing the absolute most within the discretion that you have to prevent these arrests and to make sure that taxpayer funds are not wasted on enforcing this failed policy and rather are refocused where they belong, protecting our city from violent crimes and property crimes. I also want to thank my councilmember, Councilmember Flanagan, who's not here today, for being one of the authors, and each of you that sponsored this bill. It's very important, and I appreciate that you're going to vote it forward. I tried to do that as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Casar.
And Ms. Sfinkel, I know that if Councilmember Flanagan weren't feeling ill, he would be here, and he'd thank folks from District 6 who come in from far away. And I know Heather Fazio, Mobley Watkins, and Jack Kerfman are all in from District 6 on our speakers list, so I'm standing in for Jimmy to say thanks for being down here.
Julie Stone? You have three minutes.
I will try and be brief and be under three minutes. I just wanted to say, so my name is Julie Stone. I went to law school to be a prosecutor and prosecuted in both the state of Florida at the state level and with the Attorney General's Office. And most recently, for the last 12 years, I was with the Attorney General's Office here in the state of Texas in the violent crime division. During that time, I prosecuted all sorts of drug cases in over 20 counties in the state of Texas. And during that time, during my almost 20 years as a career prosecutor and career public servant, I had the opportunity to go to these very different counties and speak on behalf. Now that I no longer work at the Attorney General's Office and I am retired from public service, I feel that it's important to note that many of the prosecutors and many of the law enforcement officers that I speak to that cannot actually come out publicly and say that they are in favor of what you all are doing right here are very happy with the way that things have progressed, the way that things are progressing in Travis County. I believe that because our resources are so strained and limited that we need law enforcement to be freed up from the time-intensive job that these low-level marijuana arrests take up, officers patrolling their arrests, jailing of the people, filling out the paperwork, submitting these reports to the labs to be tested, meeting with prosecutors to prepare for their testimony in court. All of these things take a lot of time and money and energy when the limited resources and finances of our labs throughout the state could be better served, testing DNA, testing gunshot residue, testing blood splatter analysis, and really going after the real serious crime where we have true victims that need justice in this case. So thank you very much for your time, and I really appreciate what you're doing, and I know that law enforcement does as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Fazio, and then Phil Jarrow, Lori Zapinski. So Ms. Fazio, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My friend Sarah here didn't sign up to speak, but if I could have a minute of her time, I'd appreciate that.
Where is she?
Sarah, talk.
Sarah, okay, you have five minutes.
Thank you for accommodating. My name is Heather Fazio. I am a resident of District 6. I'm also the Director of Texans for Responsible Marijuana Policy, which is a coalition organization of about 25 different groups and many individuals working to advance more sensible marijuana policy in our state. The group we work with spans the political spectrum, demonstrating that the movement for reform is not about partisan politics. It's about people and the real lives that are being harmed by marijuana prohibition. One of our main objectives is to decriminalize cannabis in the state of Texas, eliminating the threat of arrest, jail time, and the criminal record associated with small amounts. I want to thank you all for your commitment in making this a priority in the city of Austin and bringing this forward. The legalization of hemp was the catalyst for this resolution and similar conversations around the state. But to be clear, the actual, it is actually the state legislature's failure to decriminalize cannabis that brings us here today. For years, county and district attorneys across the state have been trying to mitigate harm in their communities caused by these laws by using their discretion to institute diversion programs and by simply declining charges for low-level marijuana cases. This means domestic violence cases, for example, are getting the attention they deserve when prosecutors are not allowing their offices to be bogged down with these cases. Victims of real crime deserve justice, and we're unable to fulfill that duty to our citizens when we're arresting and arresting people and wasting valuable policing resources on small amounts of marijuana. We're navigating through an important time in history as we unpack the decades of harm that have been caused by these laws and create our path forward. As laws begin to change at the federal and state level, we are impacted here locally. It is and will be a challenge for our law enforcement agencies and officers who need to adapt to new policies which are sometimes conflicting. This resolution can help to give them clear direction, falling back on a basic standard of due process, specifically probable cause for arrest. But more than just enforcement, even in Austin, there needs to be a cultural change, especially when it comes to police officers and APD. No longer should cannabis consumers be considered or treated as criminals for the simple possession or use of this plant. Cannabis consumers are often young people, but at an increasing rate, they're also senior citizens. They are students and parents. Sick people, including military veterans, are using cannabis, and it is reprehensible that we still have laws on the books that would deprive them access to this medicine. This resolution is an important opportunity for the Austin City Council and the city of Austin to use legal discretion to reduce the harmful impact of our failing state policies. For many years, the people of Texas have wanted to see an end to these state laws that would have cannabis consumers arrested, jailed, prosecuted, and branded for life with a criminal record that will forever hinder their access to education, employment, safe housing, and many more collateral consequences. These lasting collateral consequences don't just impact the individual involved, but they also impact their families and our communities. This is the human cost of marijuana prohibition, and it's not worth it. It never was. Texans from all political affiliations agree that it is time for reforming our state marijuana laws. Until the state does that, we can and must, at every opportunity, work on minimizing the harm they cause. This is Austin's opportunity. I appreciate the council members that made this a priority by bringing it forward and all of you for supporting its advancement, especially as we navigate some of the challenges with law enforcement. with law enforcement. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Phil Jarrow? Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Philip Jarrow.
Jarrow.
I just first wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for being on the right side of history, or at least discussing this in a civil way. I'm excited to be here today. I'm a former Texas police officer and served full-time with the Flugerville Police Department from 2008 to last year, 2019. I was also employed as a jailer with the Travis County Sheriff's Office from 2006 to 2008. During my time as a police officer, I served as a patrol officer, narcotic detector dog handler, tactical team member, and field training officer. I am a Texas Commission on Law Enforcement instructor and have taught numerous classes to other law enforcement officers, to include basic academy classes. The last six years of my career were spent in a supervisory role as a sergeant at the Flugerville Police Department, the majority of which was on patrol as well as criminal I hold a current advanced peace officer's license with the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, and I've decided to leave law enforcement last year due to medical reasons. It's something that police aren't talking about enough, the epidemic of suicide, the epidemic of trauma-related mental health diseases. And it's something that needs to be out in the open. It's one of the reasons that I'm here, to bring it out in the open and hopefully that more officers or former officers will come forward. I had an honorable career, and I left in good standing. I'm here as a voice for those in law enforcement who aren't free to speak their opinion. The only people you usually hear from in law enforcement are executive members, the top brass. Regular patrol officers and police officers are not free to express their opinions regarding the law, specifically cannabis. I feel an obligation to tell my story because during my career, I deprived many people, hundreds of people, for a plant. I deprived people of their freedom for a plant. My own personal medical conditions would qualify me for medical marijuana in every state that surrounds Texas. Texas does not have a medical marijuana program that is accessible or inclusive. The Texas Compassionate Use Program is so limited that almost nobody qualifies. People with cancer don't qualify. It has to be terminal cancer. I'm not sure how they make that decision. I choose not to take pharmaceutical drugs with side effects worse than my symptoms. I choose to use medical marijuana, even though it means breaking the law. Every time that I medicate with cannabis, I choose to commit an act of civil disobedience. I'm an otherwise law-abiding citizen, just like millions of other cannabis users in Relations between police and communities they serve are at a very low point. Is that my time?
That's your time. Do you want to finish your thought?
Will someone donate time?
If you, you can go to the clerk, please. You have two more minutes.
Okay. The origins of marijuana prohibition are rooted in racism and oppression, and these laws continue to disproportionately affect people of color. The laws and enforcement of law should reflect the values of the community. The reason law enforcement executives are so against relaxing laws on marijuana is that it will affect their bottom line. Asset forfeiture in drug cases is a big business for police departments. The resolution that I'm here to support would enable law enforcement, specifically Austin police officers, to focus very limited resources on issues that deeply affect the community. Violent crime and property crimes such as home burglaries strongly affect people's sense of security. So many resources are lost enforcing misdemeanor marijuana cases. It regularly takes several hours to book a person into Travis County Central Booking, taking officers off the street for extended periods. Crime labs are already backed up, and it would be impractical and very costly to test evidence in every suspected marijuana case. With legal hemp, it is impossible to tell the difference between hemp and marijuana without a lab test. These resources should be focused on important things, such as ensuring every single sexual assault evidence kit is tested. These resources could be used on more child abuse detectives, more sex crime detectives, more robbery detectives. Ask yourself, what is more important, arresting people for a plant or dedicating resources to investigating and combating real crime? We all know that Austin has been in the news for issues with how sex crimes are investigated, untested rape kits, clearance rates, and victim satisfaction with police service. This resolution offers a real opportunity to reallocate resources to help solve these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lori Zapinski, and then David King and Jeffrey Clemmons, it looks like. Lori Zapinski here. Is David King, Mr. King, you have three minutes.
I'm Chris Harris.
Okay. Can you tell the clerk, please? Jeffrey Clemmons? Joe Paulo Connolly? Matt Wallace? Dominic Silveira? Chris Harris? Is Lauren Ortell here? And so with Mr. King's, you have seven minutes.
Hi, Chris Harris. I'm in District 4. And firstly, just want to thank you all for making this historic step today. I think this is a really great step forward in the community. It's really hard to make additional points in favor of this resolution beyond what's already been stated, so I'll try to be brief. But I want to, I want to highlight something that happened this week. The Trump Department of Justice released another awful memo. But buried within that awful memo on law enforcement was a really interesting nugget, which was that many police, many folks in law enforcement are struggling with the extent to which our citizens, our people, our lawmakers have thrust all social ills onto them. And I want to salute this council because along with, along with this, along with work that you all have done on issues relating to homelessness, along with the Freedom City policy resolution, along with your investments in mental health first response, along with your investments in the Sobering Center, you've taken concrete steps to take things away of that law enforcement is currently dealing with, that is funneling people into a system which is causing more harm than is doing good, that's not helping public safety, but really just setting people back, and it's being done, obviously, in a racially disparate way. And you've really helped to fund alternative solutions to those issues. And I look forward to continuing to work with you all to fund those alternatives, to ensure that we have the best people responding to each and every type of issue that we see in our community, and to ensure that our public safety resources are really dedicated to the issues that are impacting public safety in our community, not to things that are really our lack of creativity and resources for social ills that can and should be addressed in other ways. And so, again, I salute you for passing this resolution. I think this is a really good start, and I really hope that our police department and its leadership will get on board with these sorts of changes because they are positively impacting very large sectors of our community by ensuring that they don't wind up in the spiral of the criminal justice system, don't end up with a scarlet letter for life that leaves them free and open to discrimination in all forms of society moving forward. And I really hope that, again, we can continue to build on this momentum and continue to do good work on behalf of those that have been most marginalized in our community. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Jared Grimes, and then it'll be Elizabeth Rome and Ramsey Seti. Mr. Grimes, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Jared Grimes, and I'm a, I've been deeply impacted. I've been found in my possession small amounts of marijuana. And when they made hemp legal, I began to think, well, you make, you take something that looks like marijuana, and you legalize it. However you leave it in the officer's discretion to say whether or not you're going to take somebody to jail for it, which seems just unfair, to leave it in the officer's discretion whether or not they want to take somebody to jail for something that looks like something that's legal or illegal. These officers are not trained medically, they're not licensed medically to make the distinction between the two. So, I just thought I'd come out and share my thoughts about that, and thank you all for having me.
Thank you, sir. Elizabeth Rome? You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Ream. I'm an attorney licensed in Texas. I want to thank all of you for voting yes on item 59 today, and thank those of you who are sponsoring this item. This is really important in the movement for racial justice and also criminal justice reform in Austin. Currently, low-level marijuana citations under arrest may be merely an administrative burden for APD or the city, but for people who are cited, they can have an enormous impact, and it disproportionately impacts communities of color, as all of you know from your background materials and all that you've worked on to get here. For youth, early contact with the justice system correlates to problems later and can inhibit their educational and career goals. For anyone who's vulnerable, including people experiencing homelessness, arrests can affect their current and future jobs, parental rights, and financial stability. While not relevant to the vote today, I would encourage this council to support further decriminalization of low-level marijuana possession regardless of THC levels or availability of testing. So, please today, take this step of passing this item to end unnecessary citations, and in the future, look for further opportunities to address inequities in the criminal justice system, and thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you. Ramsey Seti, and then it's Justin Atkinson, and Jared Brackenridge. Mr. Seti? Sorry if I mispronounced that. You have three minutes.
The criminalization of cannabis stems from xenophobia against Mexican immigrants, as well as from racist rhetoric against African-Americans. And to this day, through confirmation bias, blacks and Hispanics are disproportionately targeted with possession of cannabis despite whites possessing cannabis at similar rates. The criminalization of cannabis is not just a race issue, but a generational issue. Young people are statistically more likely to be caught with cannabis and therefore incurring criminal charges. That ends up hindering their overall future. You're destroying young people's future. These victimless crimes of possession are handled with fines, time, and jail, and damning records, all of which are based on outdated, disproven, regressive psychology that uses punishment as rehabilitation. And the question is, how are you rehabilitating people by punishing them? How are you rehabilitating people by socially isolating them, traumatizing them, and putting them in cages in human zoos? Because that's what jails and prisons are, a human zoo. Our justice system relies heavily on punishment, seizing of resources, social isolation, psychosocial degradation, and then re-reputation damnation as means to rehabilitate people, when all of which are disproven by modern-day psychology. Punishment doesn't equate to rehabilitation. Punishment doesn't deter crime either. It's the perception of getting caught that is the deterrent, not the punishment itself, and that's from the National Institute of Health. Our justice system needs to drastically be reformed to be congruent with modern-day psychology. And punishment fires back. How much are, how much money are you spending on these cases? What's the quantifiable cost that the taxpayer has to pay? And what's the unquantifiable cost that of ruining somebody's future by damning them with a criminal record for a victimless crime? Any council member that doesn't vote in favor of this loophole of a proposal is by proxy a racist because the criminalization of cannabis stems from and is based on xenophobia against Mexicans, Mexican immigrants, as well as racist rhetoric towards black people. And to this day, through confirmation bias, blacks and Hispanics are still targeted for possession when whites possess cannabis at a similar rate. So, if you perpetuate the same racist rhetoric, whether indirectly or directly, you're a proxy racist. And this is not just about cannabis. This is about a need for a broader criminal justice reform because our current system is entrenched with racism and colonial psychology that is not congruent with modern-day psychology and is not suitable for the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Justin Atkinson, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Justin. I'm a legal advocate with the SAFE Alliance here in Austin, and I have a prepared statement from the SAFE Alliance. SAFE is an Austin-based nonprofit whose mission is to stop abuse for everyone by serving survivors of child abuse, sexual assault and exploitation, and domestic and dating violence. We are dedicated to ending violence through prevention, advocacy, and comprehensive services for individuals, families, and communities that may be affected by abuse. SAFE urges the city of Austin to prioritize funds and resources towards programs and services that support survivors of violence. SAFE clients regularly face challenges accessing basic needs such as housing, employment, and food because for them, it may not be safe for them to do so. These survivors are working through trauma and trying to regain their self-worth. For our clients who may have the added burden of a criminal offense charge, access to basic needs and safety becomes much more difficult. We hear from clients with low-level, nonviolent misdemeanor charges, either traffic-related violations or marijuana possession that are unresolved, either through fines or fees or active warrants due to failure to appear. Many of these clients share that they have been unable to resolve these charges due to safety and financial concerns. Being arrested is an obstacle for anyone. However, for victims of violence or abuse, this can be paralyzing in their route towards safety. The SAFE Alliance does not ask clients coming in about their criminal history. Clients can choose to do so if they want. For example, clients with existing charges, warrants, or other involvements with the criminal justice system may hesitate to choose or choose not to seek medical services after a sexual assault, who fear that police involvement would instead lead to their arrest. Clients may also be afraid to file for divorce or custody of their child against their abuser out of fear their abuser may disclose this information to the court, either leading to arrest or to be denied access to their children. SAFE proudly serves residents of Austin, and we want Austin to be a beautiful and thriving city. To achieve that goal, our residents need to be self-sustaining, successful, and contribute positively to our community. We can't ask our residents to do that unless they feel physically safe. We ask that the city continue to provide funding and resources to those programs and services that results in a safer Austin for everyone. Thank you all.
Thank you. Jared Brackenridge, and then it's Nathan Murphy and Mary Elizabeth.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Jared Brackenridge. I'm from Houston Tillettson University, the oldest institution of higher learning here in the city of Austin. I come before you on behalf of many of the students at my campus. I was, prior to this meeting itself, I was, you know, letting them know about what was happening, this groundbreaking change that was about to happen here. And so, I'm very proud to know that many of you guys are all on the same page. That tells us that we're moving in the right direction. What I will say is, is when you look at marijuana, I hate to use that term because I know the derogatory form that it comes from and its implications and all of that, but what I will say is, you have to know that there's not much wrong with marijuana, but it has been criminalized and it has been like given this negative connotation when it's really, really not for that. It's just to keep our black and brown people into jails and things like that. So, I want to commend you guys for all taking the right steps on this. As we also know, many of the college students on my campus, at many other campuses and things like that, they're pursuing a degree, but halfway through it, they get caught with marijuana in their pockets, and now they have a criminal charge. They can't go get the jobs that they've studied for. So, you've studied all this time, and you're about to graduate, but now you have a criminal record, such as a teacher. Once we have those felonies and things like that, we can't, it kind of goes down and down the, down the drain. But yeah, I just want to commend you guys for doing this, and I just want to say, don't stop here. Keep going, just as our homelessness, things that you guys have tackled, don't just stop. And when that governor, when he comes to your door and he knocks, because he's going to knock, and that's okay. Don't, do not turn back around. He's going to try and intimidate you. Move in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Murphy, Mary Elizabeth, and Ken Cassidy. Mr. Murphy, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Murphy. I was born in Austin, and I have been gone for quite a while, but in that time, I have many degrees, and I also spent three years working in Colorado with a hemp extraction company. So, we took hemp flour, and we turned it into oil, which we then turned into product. So, I have some experience on the topics for which we are explaining and talking today. I want to first off, thank all of you for your commitment to this issue and for taking this step. My address today, I would like to talk about the future of where we're going because from what I can understand of the Texas law, the, as Jack said earlier, the concentrates are still highly illegal. And when it comes to concentrating hemp, even legal hemp that comes in the form of a flower at less than 0.3%, when you remove the plant matter and you have just the cannabinoids and the ter-. matter and you have just the cannabinoids and the terpenes that are left, the concentration levels can rise, and that, according to the letter of the law, can be interpreted as some sort of felony just for taking it and turning it into a more accessible form for people who don't wish to continue to smoke cannabis or hemp, and they prefer to take a tincture or something else similar. So I just want to encourage you to take the next steps and to look into ratios of TAC to CBD, and as we move into further marijuana decriminalization and absolute legalization, I would encourage you to continue to look at concentrates as another form of safer access for people who don't wish to smoke and for other topics. I thank you all for your time and for looking into this matter again in the future, and specifically my new district council member, Ann Kitchen. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Mary Elizabeth, and it's Ken Cassidy and Andre DeSert.
Hi, I'm Mary Elizabeth. I'm a volunteer with Austin Justice Coalition, and I live in District One. As you've heard, arrests for low-level marijuana possession waste community resources, and the law is applied inequitably. Black citizens are arrested at six and a half times the rate of non-Hispanic white people. If this law is not removed from the books, we need to see that it's applied equitably and that resources are wasted equitably, and that means a significant increase in the arrests of white people, people of European descent. I think this would increase, this would put a dent in white supremacy, and the law would be applied fairly, and like I said, resources would be wasted equitably. We all know that people on West Campus, South Austin, Travis Heights, Hyde Park, Terrytown smoke pot. So it, so it's not going to be difficult to reach this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy, and then Andre DeSert and Mobley, Mobley Watkins, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam and council. What a surprise that I'm the only naysayer in this. It's not that I'm a naysayer, because I've actually been a lot of your offices here lately working with EMS and fire on CBD oils. I would much rather have my police officers using CBD oils than using opioids and other forms of medication. I have a lot of sympathy for this officer here that had to retire, but the one thing I do want to try to educate you on, just warn you, are there are unintended consequences. Before I became the Austin Police Association President, I worked in narcotics for five years and organized crime, and I've investigated lots of different types of drug cases, cartels, and lots of high-level marijuana distributors. There are dozens and dozens of young kids in the city that are the age of 16 to 25 that have probably $100,000 to $200,000 in cash sitting under their beds right now. So it's going on around us. I've seized marijuana and that amount of money from dozens and dozens of people in the city. Those are the unintended consequences. We have people in the city right now that are suffering, and I'm not going to get in your way when you go to the legislature in a, in a year and a half to try to get marijuana legalized. That's the place to do it. We have young kids in the city right now, we just had one that testified about felony levels, amount of marijuana. This has nothing to do with that, so the false pretenses are already out there, stoked by the media that it's going to be legal to smoke marijuana in the city of Austin. Now, your chief of police has told you, no, we're not. So it's against the law. We have kids in this city, they're gonna take those cigarettes and lace them with PCP, you know, not, not a lot of them. Once you have to fight someone like that, I love the snickering, because once you have to fight individual smoking PCP-laced marijuana, it's not a good result. It's never a good result. But you have to think about the unintended consequences. You know, I'll be there behind you when you go to the legislature in a year and a half. Like I said, I'm all on board with CBD oils, but just think about the unintended consequence.
Thank you. Andre DeSert, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Andrew. I live in District 10. I just want to thank the council for taking this up. It's going to make a profound and positive impact on our community, and I'm looking forward to seeing the resources that will be saved going towards more compassionate programming. So thanks again.
Oh, thank you. Mobley Watkins. And then it's Michael Ward and Brianna Byrd. So Mr. Watkins, you have three minutes.
My name's Mobley. I am grateful for your time. I'll be brief. I'm also very grateful that there doesn't seem to be very much controversy on this subject among the people who will be voting on it. I'm a, I'm a proud resident of District 4, and I'm also a musician in the city. So I have frequent occasions to, to find myself in really privileged, moneyed, predominantly white spaces in the city, and constantly see these substances used with, with impunity. And it's difficult to describe how gut-wrenching and how Kafkaesque it is to go from those spaces back to my neighborhood where I interact with people, often minor, minors, young people who've come into contact with the state and with the criminal justice system as a result of engaging in the exact same activities that I see rich and powerful people on the other side of town engaging in. So thank you very much for the step that you're taking, and I hope that it's the first of, of many steps in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Ward, Jr.
Yep. Hi, everybody. My name is Michael Ward, Jr., and I'm District 7. I'm here to say to, to kind of come just to show support for this bill, for, for 59, for everybody who's kind of echoing a lot of the same viewpoints about how important this is to not only tip the scales back in diversity, equity, inclusion, really kind of address what we're focusing our time on. One thing I'm going to bring to attention is here, I kind of saw some signs up there, and I wanted to bring some down. No more pointless arrests. I bring that up because here in Austin, there are a couple of challenges when we think about the population. If we continue to do as we are, we'll just divide ourselves between whites and non-whites, between educated, uneducated, between the experienced and inexperienced, and there's policies and procedures in place today that are just continuing that divide. You see it in numbers where Austin is one of the fastest-growing cities in Austin, oh, well, in the, in the United States, however, it has a depleting African-American population. Yes, we're so close to Mexico, but we have declined immigration policies as well, just because people don't really see Austin as a place where it is diverse across the board, and saying yes to 59 could kind of tip the scales in that direction and actually show Austin for being a liberal city as it, as it paints itself to be. Another one is criminalization equals racism. When you look at how much money is being spent across on pointless policies, on time spent, on resources that could be used elsewhere, look at the homeless population, look at immigration policies, look at healthcare, there's other things that you could be spending your time and resources on to actually start to see what are some things you could be spending your time on holistically. Right now, I just noticed that when you think about the criminal justice system, we think about it as silos, one by itself and one entity, but everything is connected. Everything is connected here within ourselves. If you're painting a narrative that certain types of individuals are the ones that should be arrested and others are not, and you're creating a culture here in Austin that is not being reciprocated across the board. And I wholeheartedly believe that instead of us trying to have less diversity or be discriminative against the board, that we need to start having different conversations where thinking about, if I was in that situation, what is it that I would want for myself? What would I want for my child? What would I want for, for my brother, for my sister? And it comes down to being fair, it comes down to being equitable across the board. And one thing that I would say is, too many black men is arrested, and I mentioned earlier about, of us just wasting time and realizing that, hey, if we are arresting black men predominantly more than anyone else, then that's impacting our workforce, that's impacting families, that's impacting businesses that could be built, it's impacting families that don't have stability. Like, all these actions are building one after another, and we need to realize, well, what are the consequences that we are creating? What are the chain of events that we're creating once we are either just isolating individuals, just focusing on one over the other? And thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Brianna Byrd. If there is anybody else that signed up to speak, can you raise your hand? I haven't called you. Okay. You have three minutes, Ms. Byrd.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to step up here and say hello to everybody. I'm a representative of Jump On It and an extension or an affiliate, Jump On It University, and we work with youth in a community, and a lot of them come from the court systems, and a lot of them have cases similar to what we're discussing today. And to minimize the decriminalize that is an important impact in their lives and what we're doing, and it would definitely be to their benefit. And I have the executive director here who would like to speak as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Nook Turner, and I just want to say briefly that we were all for decriminalizing marijuana, and especially in small amounts, things like that, but I do want to emphasize to you guys in moving forward from that point is, we need to be a lot more proactive in supporting programs in the city such as Jump On It and, and others that are actually educating the youth on the effects of any kind of mind-altering substance, whether it be alcohol, marijuana, opioids, or whatever, there needs to be a lot more education going out so people can understand the effects and, and the cause, the consequences, and the results of any choice that you make. And that's one thing that we focus on is, is teaching the youth that. We pass out drug information at all of our events, everything that we do, and we educate, because we don't tell people what's right and wrong and what not to do. We want to inform them on the consequences of their choice, and I think that's going to be very important in moving forward regardless, is that we, we put more into our educational programs that do cater to blacks and Hispanics to get the information out. And so it won't be a miscommunication of, oh, it's cool to smoke weed, it's cool to, to go out and break the law, because it's, until it's passed as marijuana is legal, it is still illegal, and we still want to get that information out as much as we can and educate our youth to not be in situations where they can be arrested, detained, given a ticket or anything. We teach them to steer clear of anything that'll cause them any kind of legal implications for what they do. So, you know, we, we support that, and we support you guys moving forward on that, but you guys also have to understand, support the organizations that are out there educating the youth and educating the ones that are targeted most by marijuana.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers I have signed up, but I'll just read the following folks who signed up for item 59 but are not asking to speak. David King, Bo Delp, Jack Kerfman, Selena Z, Heather Heiss, Al Amato, Angela Benavita Scarza, Julie Neach, Brooks R., Sarah Todd, Shersis Carter, I apologize if I mispronounced any of these, Kate Graziano. Does anybody have any discussion, questions, statements? Councilor Kassar?
Well, thank you to everyone who testified on this item. Thanks to all of the city staff and city legal and the police department and everyone that's worked to get this to the, to the place that it is. And I, I appreciate that this is just one step of many that are important for us to take. Before we take the vote, I just want to talk about, again, from, from my perspective, why it's so important. We've heard from folks that have lost their jobs because of low-level marijuana offense. We've heard about clients in a domestic violence shelter who are afraid to seek medical or legal services because of pending warrants or low-level marijuana offenses. The ACLU highlighted in a report, a musician working in my district who lost not just his job, but also his driver's license, so he couldn't drive to gigs anymore and quit playing music. All of those things just aren't right. There's a human cost, obviously, but I think there's also a public safety cost. I think that us spending extra dollars to pursue these low-level cases not only isn't right, but I think actually makes us less safe, because that instability in people's lives, I think, is part of what drives lack of safety in our community. And so I think that this decision isn't just right for all the reasons laid out here, but also because I think it makes us better off. So I think it's time to do the right thing. It's the right thing for criminal justice reform, it's the right thing from a common sense perspective, and it's the right thing for racial equity. We had a lot of testimony here on racial equity issues, and I really appreciate that the police department keeps good data on, on different offenses and, and makes that data available to the public. Publicly posted as backup to this item is the, the 2019 citations for, for marijuana, and there were 432 citations, 201 were marked as Hispanic or Latino, 163 black, three Asian, 64 whites, and one unknown. So that's a total of 432. That's, means 84% were for black and Latino, Latina Austinites, who we know compose in the low 40% of the population in the city. So I think folks raising that racial equity issue are raising a real issue in the city, an issue that isn't solved by this resolution, but I think this resolution is acknowledging that. We know we have so much more work to do, and we appreciate you all continuing to organize to, to push us to do the right thing. I think that this, you know, I just really also want to thank my colleagues for them working together with me on it, even up into these last-minute amendments, so I appreciate each of y'all's support. I do think it's important to know that, of course, we cannot change state law, and so this is not a change to the state law, and we want people out in the community to know that, but it does really reprioritize what it is that we're focusing on with the goal of, of eliminating all the penalties as well as getting as far as we can go under state law to as little enforcement as we can get.
I just want to make brief comments as well, and they're similar to the ones I made at our press conference on Tuesday, that, you know, the state created an unfunded mandate by legalizing hemp, because it means that in order to enforce marijuana laws, local governments have to purchase expensive test equipment that isn't widely available. The state also imposed a revenue cap, which means that it's, that every spending decision that we have as a council looking forward, we have to think of very carefully to determine whether it's worth limited resources. Other jurisdictions, including Travis County, have said they are not prosecuting these cases. Brown Rock Police are no longer enforcing these types of cases because it isn't worth their resources, and others are following suit. As mentioned several times, a negative impact on a person's life of a marijuana-related arrest or citation, along with the history of inequitable enforcement, and relatively minor public safety impact make enforcing these offenses not worth it for the city of Austin, it just doesn't make any sense. We have right now federal laws that conflict with state laws, because states have decided the values of their people, and it still conflicts with federal drug laws. I see this as an instance where our state laws conflict with the values of Austin, and we need to use our resources the best way that we can. I respect everything that APD does, but council is responsible for deciding our policy and our priorities and how we use our resources. And I thank you, Councilor Kassar, for asking me to co-sponsor, and I look forward to voting yes. Are there any other comments? Councilor Andrew?
I, yes, you know, it's, it's, it's very sad that, you know, even years back, where in the 70s where we had a person that got caught with one joint and was given life in prison, and those are the kind of things that have destroyed so many lives here in the United States. I have veteran friends that are saying that they're willing to kill us by giving us all these opiates and painkillers, but they won't let us smoke one joint because we'll lose our military, our veteran benefit. And, and that's what's been going on in this country, you know. I wish that it was possible to legalize it so that we wouldn't be destroying life. I had a brother that had an accident that it wasn't even his fault at work, and they tested him, and he, later on, he had not even smoked for a week, but he still was in his blood system and his urine, and he got busted, and he lost his job and all his benefits. You know, these are the kind of things that have been going on, and, you know, I'm going to be supporting this, of course, but I wish that we, we were able to do, go a little further, but I know we can't. You know, it's a federal law, and I think, I just want to make a statement to the, to the people that watch on TV here and, and to let them know that, you know, this, this marijuana law has been going on and has been destroying a lot of lives and caused a lot of hardship to our people. And so I just, I'm really proud to be able to, to support this and hope in the future that this country realizes that we need to start sending people to jail because they got caught with a small amount of marijuana and legalize it.
Councilor Kitchen?
Yes, I, I appreciate and, and, and agree with everything my colleagues have said, and thank you. I would only add one other thing, and that is, I wanted to speak- I would only add one other thing, and that is, I wanted to speak to some misunderstandings that I've heard, and just reiterate what others have said. This council values, and our public values, continuing to protect the public from trafficking or violent felonies. And what this resolution does is it makes clear that we are continuing to focus our resources where it matters, and that's on these kinds of offenses, and that's trafficking or violent felonies. And Councilmember Kassar, in alter, I appreciate y'all's amendment that makes that clear, which is that we're directed to ensure that the action we're taking doesn't inhibit the ability to prosecute high-priority felony-level trafficking or violent felony charges. And that's really, that is absolutely where we need to be focusing our resources. We do not need to be focusing resources on offenses that don't hurt other people. And I agree with what my colleagues are saying about the changes that we need at the state law in the future, at the state level in the future. So, again, I just want to reiterate that this council is continuing with our responsibilities to protect the public, and actually protect all the public, so that there are actions that individuals take with regard to individual use that's not harming the public, and it should not be something that we're focusing on making illegal.
Thanks for that clarification, Councilmember Kitchen. Did you have some?
I didn't want to hop in line.
Councilmember Poole? Oh, no. Does anybody else on this side have any comments? Councilmember Kassar?
Yeah, there had been, I think, on that clarification point, I think there's been some requests just for it to be really clear to folks what the next steps are, you know, upon passage of the resolution. It essentially holds the status quo on the fact that we are not currently investing in testing for these low-level cases, and we'll continue to not invest in that testing. And so that's where we are today, where low-level cases are essentially being dismissed. But now, instead of the possibility of us investing that testing and going and charging those cases later, just continuing with that status quo of those cases not being tested. And then there's a request to the Police Department to work with law on updated policing policies as it's associated with this. Now knowing that we won't be investing in those tests, how does that impact probable cause? Can that result in even fewer arrests and citations? And so the Police Department will be working together with the Law Department with the goal of really reducing that enforcement to the greatest extent possible, and those policies will hopefully be public before May, which is what's written into this. And I think it's important for folks in the community to know that there's still work to be done at the state legislature, and there are still, the Law Department and the police will still work to find out how to minimize that enforcement to the greatest extent under the law, but there are places where they might find under state law that if somebody can't ID themselves, or they can't run warrants against someone, that there may still continue to be arrests, even if we wish that there were not. And so it's important for folks to try to still go to the legislature for where decriminalization and legalization can happen, but I believe we're on track to getting there, and this is the furthest the city council can go to just absolutely minimize our resources to this thing that has been hurting folks for too long. So thank you, guys, for organizing on this.
All those in favor of item 59, please raise your hand. That passes 9-0 with Councilmember Flanagan absent and Mayor Adler absent. We've disposed of all today's items, but please stick around for live music. We are adjourned at 5:19. And proclamations.[1795.53][1795.53]